Let's go ahead and get started. It is 7:02. I'd like to welcome everybody to our April 1st, no fooling, city council meeting. We, this is kind of an interest weird day. It's kind of snowed today when we had 75 degrees on Tuesday. Shorts one day, winter coats the next. That's spring in West Virginia. As we enter our moment of silence, we want to make sure that we keep continue to keep Jack rigor in thoughts and prayers. He is home and he's working toward getting stronger all the time at home with his lovely wife, Sharla, and family. So we're glad for that. And we're also glad for Mary's continued recovery from her surgery. So keep her in thoughts and prayers as well as we enter our moment of silence. Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We do have a few folks that have wished to address us as council tonight. I just would ask that as we're work, as we go through those presentations to try to keep those to around no more than five minutes so that we can keep the agenda moving this evening. First up, Dr. Reed is here. And we've got a proclamation here for Take Down Tobacco. It's a national coalition. Dr. Reed, if you don't, if you don't care, why don't we go ahead and do this first? And then we'll get to your presentation. I feel like we just proclimated you. Yeah, come on.
Yeah, been proclaimed.
Been proclaimed a couple of times.
When they're hard up for you, they call one hundred and eight.
Two thousand seven hundred, how many?
Twenty-seven sixty-two.
Twenty-seven sixty-two. That's the number of babies Dr. Reed delivered from 1966 to 2000.
Two thousand.
Two thousand. Yeah. So I was one of those. Yeah, I was one of those. So, okay. This one, the last proclamation we did was for Dr. Reed Day. This one is for Take Down Tobacco. And this is for April 1st, 2021. Whereas tobacco and vaping are addictive products containing nicotine and other harmful products, whereas tobacco usage is still the largest cause of early death in this country, vaping with its high content of nicotine is a stimulant elevating blood pressure and having other negative cardiovascular effects. Whereas products are expensive, a package of cigarettes a day for a year costs over $2,000, vaping products also have significant costs. Whereas many people, especially teenagers who start with vaping, progress to other adverse drug use. Whereas the combination of these habits with the current COVID-19 infections probably increase the risk of either alone. Therefore, let's work together to minimalize the use of vaping and tobacco products and to bring COVID-19 under control, especially for the health and well-being of our children and young adults. We hereby declare April the 1st, 2021, that's today, Take Down Tobacco Day in the city of Buchanan. And we urge all of our residents to help make Buchanan a tobacco-free community. So Dr. Reed, I will allow you to hold that and we'll do a little photo op here. We'll smile with our eyes.
Button Jeff. Didn't go, didn't go. Push the button down. There you go.
All right. Macy, did you get it?
Yeah, I got it.
Cool. Okay.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome. If you want to, you can leave. It's up to you. We can have it framed for you. Or if you want to take it, it's on the nice cardstock paper. Okay. Then we'll yield to your presentation.
I assume that, I assume that the five minutes included in your reading.
Yes.
Well, if that was the case, I should have taken longer.
Well, you heard that version of the proclamation. So I'll not read mine. Except, therefore, we encourage all non-smokers, e-cigarette users, to actively encourage and support users to make every effort to reduce and eventually quit, and non-users to not start. The point of this is everybody's got part in the action. Notice it started with all. Number two, legislators to increase taxes on these products as a deterrent to their use. Number three, educational efforts, especially youngsters, to avoid use because of adverse health effects, cost, and loss of life years. Average smoker dies 10 to 14 years earlier than the rest. Continue to maintain indoor smoking, vaping restrictions enacted by the Upper Buchanan Health Department and many other health-related entities. That's the county commission's job. So everybody gets a piece of the action if they'll take it. Tobacco companies spent nine million, nine billion dollars for U.S. marketing of tobacco or tobacco product companies. Hell, ever don't have to report. There's a distinction there. Tobacco companies and tobacco product companies. Tobacco taxes in Missouri, 17 cents a pack. West Virginia, $1.20. District Columbia, 4.50 a pack. In West Virginia, healthcare because of tobacco use costs $1 billion. That's what percentage of the state budget? What is it? Six billion or something like that? And loss of productivity costs 1.23 billion annually. Tobacco use is the leading cause of preventable death in U.S. $480,000 deaths annually. And now COVID has exceeded that. Smokers average 10 to 14 years' loss of life. Secondhand smoke is also detrimental. Tobacco smoke contains thousands of chemicals, at least 70 are carcinogenic. Nicotine and tobacco and most vapes is addictive and is the reason it's so hard to quit tobacco and vaping use. Menthol increases that difficulty. So what can we do? I present a West Virginia Academy of Family Physicians program called Tar Wars, the fourth and fifth grades. Been in eight different counties over several years. All smokers or not can talk to non-users about risks and reason to not be users, and to users to encourage and help reduce or quit usage. Support the health rules, as mentioned earlier. Legislature, increase tobacco taxes, stop sale of flavored and menthol products, support tobacco avoidance education. Users, ask for help. Tobacco Quit Line, 1-877-966-8784. There's some counseling available there. Set small goals, work toward success. My experience why people quit, because they get sick. Come into the hospital, many of them I've never seen before. Talk to them and a few of them are able to quit. Some people I've talked to for 10 years, and they come in for a regular check and say, well, Doc, haven't had a cigarette since January 1st, cold turkey. But the biggest reason is the children get after their parents, and to keep after them, and to keep after them till they finally quit. Average may take six, seven times trying in order to accomplish quitting. And craving may never go away. So I ask, what will you do? Thank you. Got any questions? I'll try to answer them.
Thank you, Joe. I got one thing I want to tell you. Four months and six days.
Wonderful. You quit before, right?
Quit for several years in between, and wanted to, wanted to quit again, but wasn't ready. But the man upstairs made that happen. So I'm not smoking anymore.
Wonderful.
Okay. There you go.
Thank goodness I never got started.
I know.
I think I would have had a tough time quitting.
I grew, I grew up, I was smoking another.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Reed.
Thanks, Doc.
Anybody else, anybody else wants a copy of the stuff I put out?
I never even dreamed of trying. I knew Dr. Reed would, would haunt me forever.
If you would. These are posters that have been made by kids second through fifth grade.
Oh, what are we doing?
Going to hold a poster.
Oh, you want to?
I'm going to hold a poster.
So we all hold a poster?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Just enough for each.
Will you reach your pen?
I'm going to get down so I can hide my sandals.
I'm not getting down because I won't be able to get back up.
Unless you probably take pictures of time.
That's right.
Can you get us all?
Yep.
Those will mail in properly then.
All right.
Hold on.
One more for Dr. Reed.
Now hold the flash down and do it one more.
I've been telling everybody I was six-four.
Getting pretty bossy there, Rodney.
You have to, you have to like hold it. There you go.
Thank you.
This is going to screw things up for me. I've been telling everyone I was six-four. I guess that's going to fly more.
Well, then that makes me like six, six-nine.
Dr. Reed, are we leaving these here for the meeting? Are you taking it with you?
Taking it with him. You can keep them if you like. I can pick them up later.
No, I have.
Take it with you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Reed.
Take care, Joe. Thank you for coming.
Anybody else need a packet? I felt a double check. Everybody good? And has everyone signed in that wish to speak prior to the meeting? Chief, do you want to speak?
No.
Okay.
I put him there.
All right.
All right, chief.
He likes to slip, slide under, but I put him there. Okay. Next up, we've got Jody Light and Deanna Grob here from the Almost Heaven BBQ Bash. They are coming to speak with us about the Almost Heaven Rib Fest that is going to be held in Buchanan on Saturday, May the 1st at the Bi-Si. Jody came and spoke to Consolidated Public Works on Thursday of last week. And Consolidated Public Works suggested that she come to the council meeting to be, to give the council a overview of what's going to happen. So Jody and/or Deanna, go ahead. Floor is yours.
Okay. I passed out information. It's just a quick cheat sheet. We give you a one pager and hopefully that gives you everything you need to know. Things have changed a little bit in the last week. I guess it was Thursday, about a week. Since the governor opened up restrictions on fairs and festivals, we just finally felt confident enough to put this out. And when we did, we put up a thing on our website, put up applications, and all at once, things have started happening. Obviously, we have to get a lot more teams in to make it pay out. But it's been interesting. What started out, we thought is a, well, we'll get some little backyard teams from around West Virginia and stuff to come in. We got, I got a call that first day from a team, one of the top teams in Tennessee who's coming. One from Virginia, two from Virginia, two or three from West Virginia. A fellow's already registered and paid from Charlotte, North Carolina, got a call today. Just hit the Kansas City BBQ Society website. That's where all members all over the world can see it. So I got a call from Pittsburgh from a guy. The one that really kind of threw me off about an hour ago, I got a message and I didn't take it. I thought it was a spam call. But I read the message and it was a gentleman from Corpus Christi, Texas, who is number 12 overall in the United States cooking all four meats. He is currently number two, which I'm just shocked, Red Mule's Badass BBQ from Corpus Christi, Texas. He is number two in the United States in point standing and ribs. And he's coming here. He does have some family in Parkersburg, but he's going to Alabama next weekend, South Carolina the weekend after, Ohio the weekend after, and here to Buchanan on the 1st, and bringing some of his family members. So I know they're already getting bookings and hotels. We've had vendors call and want to come in. So we'll have hippie dippy donuts and zoos and the Sweet Delicious Truck will be there for kids. Burma is doing some great kids activities. They said they'd have three or four tents and canopies with, you know, some contests and games and fun things. We have bingo starting at 1 o'clock inside the bicentennial. We'll have cornhole. Just a day of fun, we hope, for families. We hope it's a beautiful day and it's a good way to kick off spring. And it just coincides with the first day the governor gave us the all clear. I had given you, and I did this for Consolidated, basically the same thing they saw. We are offering $1,000 to, in total prize money per contest, so you can do the math there. I was wrong on one thing. The second line, it says it's $5 a team. We have to pay $8 for every team that comes in. Plus, you have to pay to have your reps come in and the mileage and all that. Of course, we have Porter Johnson, so forth. And there's, I'm still waiting on event insurance. They called yesterday morning. I haven't got a quote. So there's kind of where we're at. I had asked our wish list. I think Consolidated said it was okay probably to use the bay at the fire department. JB just wants ribs and Randy. So as long as we give them ribs, they're happy. I don't know if we'll need the manifold attached. Mitch, I think, did that before. They put a manifold on the fire hydrant. And then that way we can split off from that with water. You know, again, that's a wish list. It's not a have to to make it happen. We hope, I had talked to Randy about maybe doing some PR, press releases through the city, the website, just to promote it. And if there's any finances that you can let loose of to help us be solvent this time, we'd be appreciative. But it's going to happen one way or another. But the big thing is, people have been asking, we want barbecue, we want barbecue. So from 4:00 to 7:00, we'll have barbecue available to dine in. Or we're going to have, we've already got it worked out. They can go in behind the bicentennial. A lot of people have already pre-ordered barbecue. I didn't expect that five weeks out. And they can literally pull up and say, Robbie Skinner ordered four meals, and we'll hand them to you. We don't even have to park. Keep on going. And that kind of helps with the COVID thing. But, you know, elderly can pick up meals and don't have to stop. So anyway, we're just kind of excited. This may turn into something. We talked to some of the teams and said, would you be interested if this is successful and it's supported by the community in the city, of maybe doing one in the fall? So, I mean, we foresee if this is successful, of doing this again in the fall, and maybe do it a semi-annual, a spring and fall event. Again, if it's accepted and everyone, so far, the community and the things on Facebook has been very, very positive. have been very, very positive. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to, and I already had someone offer to be a rib judge, so.
Just drop.
When you get the number-two person in the country from Texas coming, that just really floored me. I didn't expect that. Questions? Anybody?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Hi, Jerry. It's Jack Reeder.
Hi, Joe.
My question, I do mention that, well, one, I will volunteer to be a judge.
I want to volunteer. Okay.
My volunteer here. But anyways, during the presentation, you mentioned something about some financial support from the city.
It would be appreciated.
What type of fund or, or financial support would you be requesting?
You know, we're obviously, we're open and flexible. Someone mentioned to me, "Well, how much of your trophies and that kind of thing?" And they're going to run the cash prizes and trophies between $2,000 and $2,500. We thought if that's something within the city would want to do, we could actually get their, you know, promoted by, sponsored by, City of Buchanan on the trophies and awards. You know, that's entirely up to them. Somehow, we're going to make it happen, but that, you know, would be helpful, because this is a kind of a quick, we're 30 days from today. So trying to get it all together is a quick thing. I had not even thought of asking anybody in town or anywhere for sponsorship, because it was just, we weren't even sure we could open it up and do it until the governor gave the green light, just, what, a week ago? So, whatever you think, Jack, that's kind of, that would help us, but I mean, you know, we're open for suggestions.
That's what my question. Under your projected event costs, $1,000, $300 for the porta-johns, the high number on the supplies, $500, that's $1,800.
Oh, no, that's $2,000. That's $1,000 prize money per contest.
And you have two contests.
Yeah, two contests.
So it's $2,800, or did you, total expenses?
No, that's not total, but that's some of the basics, yeah. Then we have to pay, I was wrong, I thought it was $5 a team, it's $8 a team, so for every team that comes, that's one of the things. We've already, I did put it on here, our KCBS reps, we have to put them up in a hotel for a night or two, and I believe they said we have to pay mileage from, ones in Virginia, ones in North Carolina, it's the closest ones I could find, and that's going to be $300 to $500 for their mileage, and that's a requirement. So, anyway, I just don't know where it will go, but that's kind of what we thought.
Well, I was, in terms of Jack's comment, I was, I was thinking that it would, that it would, that the city would, if we contributed either $2,000 or $2,500 toward this to be a sponsor and to help this become a reality, I think bringing barbecue, a barbecue event back to town is, is a good thing, a step in the right direction, and I'd like for the city to be supportive all the way around with this. So I, I think $2,000 or $2,500 would be a good, a good contribution for us to consider, and I think it would, you know, certainly help with their expenses and show our support. But I'd yield to the council for their thoughts.
I'd support $2,000.
I would, I would consider that too, but there, sometimes, you know, like with the Strawberry Festival, those days come in. We, the city also does in-kind assistance, okay? And, you know, like, Pam mentioned VIPS. I hadn't thought about that, and I haven't talked to Matt yet.
Boos. Pam mentioned the VIPS, the volunteers, like for security and, you know, just down in that area.
You can't go, just go to them. You've got to go through the chief of police to do that.
Yes, right. She suggests that. I just hadn't done that yet.
Okay.
Yep.
And then I don't know, would we have firemen or extra on hand if they're, because it is wood-burning barbecue, is that correct? And there would have to be a fire facility.
Well, the good news is, is this is set to be on the lot right behind the fire department.
That's what I was saying. I heard the thing over at the 88 Restaurant over there.
That's where the, that's where we'll serve the meals and do the cornhole and the bingo.
But the cooking would be done over there by the fire department.
Okay. Are you okay with us? You think we'll be okay having the, I told him just run a hose back there behind the fire department.
Yeah.
Because the teams would be right behind your building.
Well, sometimes it's a little muffled.
I know.
And I can't.
We do that. We run water out there for the steam engines when the Strawberry Festival, too.
Okay. Yeah, that's right.
We want to be safe. Absolutely.
And I think Jerry had mentioned about running water, not from the hot, but not from the hot.
The fire department doesn't like that a lot.
Right.
We got water, so.
But we'll be able to get water and so forth.
Thanks, Jerry. Thank you, Jerry.
Yeah.
He just wants Jake.
Okay. But I think you weren't, I mean, the fact is, she's already appeared before the Consolidated Public Works, so it's on there, and it was the public, Consolidated Public Works. Basically, approved it, sending it on the council.
Did you say that earlier?
Yes, she did come before. But Consolidated Public Works does not, but from a financial standpoint, the council needs to make that decision, because the council oversees the general fund.
So, CJ, are you prepared to make a motion to contribute the $2,000?
I am.
I second.
Okay. This is under F4 on our agenda, just for everybody's reference. There is a motion that the City of Buchanan contribute $2,000 toward the Almost Heaven Rib Fest, thus becoming a sponsor. We have a second by Mrs. Albal. Do we have any further discussion on the matter? Hearing the need for none, we'll go ahead and call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those like sign opposed. The motion carries unanimously. Yes, we have to wait for the long vote.
We thank you very, very much, and we hope we'll make you proud. And really, truly, we've talked to some teams about this being an annual or semi-annual event. We're not trying to, you know, ask for anything, but I think it really could be a benefit to the city, and we'd love to see y'all down there for some barbecue.
Heads and beds.
Heads and beds. That's what we want, some more hotel motel tax. Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
Good to see you.
Thank you for that. Much, CJ.
You're welcome. Maybe consider when we get all the amenities in Jawbone and the Chase Drive-Thru Lot, that's a nice venue also.
Funny you should mention that. Mr. Skinner just said, "Would you consider?" We would need to have some serious discussion about the volume of power. We talked about that before. We have to have a lot of 30-amp, a lot of 50-amp power.
Yes.
I don't know what they're, I know they're doing it, I don't know.
Groundhog number two.
You upgrade the power to Jawbone Park.
How many 30s and 50s are you going to have?
Well, actually, it is mostly 30 amps, but as far as total amperage, we have 400 amps coming off of the restroom side that we can utilize, and 800 amps in the new services, but the new services aren't complete yet.
But for your next round?
Yeah, for the next round. And the other, the other thing that's attractive for vendors that a lot of these areas don't have, and since Dr. Reed's here, I think he'd be a perfect one to talk about it, too, is discharge of gray water. You know, Jawbone, that's one of the things that we're incorporating in Jawbone, is sewer taps, kind of like a camper, like an RV park, to where, where the vendors or where your participants can discharge their gray water into those sewer taps.
Will that be ready in May?
Not this May.
Okay. Because we're renting those.
I mean, it will be, I'll put it this way, it'll be ready, we will be able to get festival stuff in there mid-May.
Sure.
But I don't want to, I don't want to say that the power will be there.
Will the gray water?
Well, they're working on it.
Okay. Because we usually rent those.
22, maybe in 22.
Oh, it'll definitely be ready.
Be ready then.
We can have that discussion.
June, July, probably.
Especially even if we just did the spring and fall. I mean, it can grow. This guy from Texas just, he said, "Are you serious? It's a double rib, double points?" He's chasing points, because he's number-two in the country. You know, so I went out to see who number three, four, and five, and I'm contacting them to see if they'll come, too.
You didn't go and see who number one was?
Well, I got number one, he's in Stockdale, Texas. I got to, you know, check with him. So anyway, thank you all very much. I want to take a lot of your time.
Appreciate it.
I know, I'm getting out of here.
Sometime I could credit for that.
That's right. You have that question.
No good deed.
I can smell the barbecue cooking.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll be in touch.
Yes, well, we'll get you more details as it comes to you.
Give me the material.
Thanks, Jerry.
Bye now.
Moving on, we are down to our department and board reports, and we start with Mr. Arnold.
Can I, can I, let's see.
Sure.
Oh, no, you don't want that, that's okay. Pam, did you disconnect and come back on? Pam, did you disconnect and come back on by chance?
She just disconnected.
Pam Buckle, are you still there?
Hello, I'm in.
Yeah, yeah, I'm in.
She's number five.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
We can now.
You smell those ribs, Pam. How come you have to eat them once a year?
How's coming to do what?
We need to do food.
Okay, Jerry, you're up. Good luck following the food.
Phone system's installed, new facility. We're still waiting on some programming, but it's installed. Jay, Vince, and I met with the developer about a project on West Main Street yesterday that I hope to have more to report on. Reviewed the cemetery bids and would recommend accepting the low bid from Everson Car Farms. That was in Consolidated. They, I have check preferences, they're only up and up, and so Brad's met with them. I'm working with Tom on the contract for the yearly maintenance, and let's hope all goes well. Street Department, we continue to work on Gateway West Project. We've set the drop inlets and hope to complete the sidewalk portion next week. We have one final sidewalk port, and then light installation, complete the handrail at the Culver Crossing, and that project will be completed. Jay is anticipating somewhere around the end of April to have a final inspection on that. Water and electric is completed, Jawbone Park, sewer's being installed. Once it's completed, we'll install the geotile. The power's all in, we just are waiting on, now we're waiting on Mon Power to do the actual connection, so. And I did, one of the things that Jody talked about, 30-amp, 50-amp circuits, one of the things that we tried to do, and well, we have done, is we put chases under all the sidewalks so that there's no cords or hoses, things of that nature, that cross any pedestrian path in Jawbone. And part of that is, it's hard to install potentially in a wet location like Jawbone, it's hard to put in electrical components, plugs, things like that, in service and leave them in the ground. You dig a hole in Jawbone, CJ can tell you, if you dig a hole in Jawbone, go back, it's full of water. Rodney's got a hook up there in the middle of the park that I told him, whenever he gets ready to start with Festival Fridays, we'll have to change the outlets in it, because they've been flooded, you know, several times, and the contacts do that. So what we've done is kind of a hybrid system down there. It's kind of similar to carnival setup. We have main power coming in. I'm sure you've seen the new panels down there on the Madison Street side. We have the main panel set there, and then we've ordered heavy-capacity cords, and they call them spider boxes, but they're just a, kind of used on a construction site. You have a cord going in, and you've got several different plugs coming off of it. So it'll be partially permanent, and part of it we'll have to set up as the events, whatever event takes place there, so. I think it'll work real well for us. And again, you know, that's the kind of thing we were looking at doing right there. We have a crew coming out tomorrow to clean sidewalks. I'm hoping, I asked Brad Hawkins, he's one of the guys coming out tomorrow to do that, and I said, "Are you sure you don't want to wait?" And I've never seen that snow today. I said, "You sure you don't want to wait?" I said, "There may still be some, the state throwing some more stone on our sidewalks." He said, "No, we're going to get them cleaned off." So they're going to start on that early in the morning, and probably have that completed by about 9:00 tomorrow morning, before traffic starts. We're advertising right now to hire a park attendant for the '21 season, and we have one of our full-time staff that's actually resigned. Today was his last day on the payroll. So again, we're going to be back to short staff, looking for someone to fill that position. So we'll be advertising that. North Spring Street project's moving along with sewer, about halfway to our project midpoint with the sanitary sewer. Of course, they'll get to the midpoint, then go back and pull the storm sewer, and completely demo the street sidewalks at that time, and then we will come along and start reinstalling the sidewalks and getting the base for the street ready as they complete that section. And of course, they're working on the additional sewer connections in Jawbone Park. And then, nothing new in water and waste, just a reminder, which I know that our PR man has put it out there, and just a reminder that the Upper County Solid Waste Authority Paper Shred Event on April 17th from 9:00 AM to noon at the new street facility on Mudlock Road, and that's 395 Mudlock Road, if you need an address. That's all I have, Mary. Unless there's questions.
Wemmets on what you can bring to shred?
That, I think they had it, it was, Amber, you helped me with that one, because I know you've been there. Wemmets to the shred, on the shred event.
They only want to take residential. They don't want, if you, if you take a pickup truck load, they're probably not going to take that from their person. If you call them ahead of time and arrange it commercially, they'll let you come out. I've done that before with the city.
If you do what now?
Commercial, like, the city had a lot of things to dispose of, and I called them ahead of time, and we took a truck out there, but we had to plan that way ahead of time, so that we wouldn't disrupt any of the residential drop-offs.
Yeah.
Thank you.
One thing that I did, I did not put up, I didn't put on my report, because I didn't have the information yet. Just got a, Brad just made contact with our paving contractor, and he's in hopes, week after next, to begin on Smithfield Street. So he's supposed to give us a call next week for a definite, and as soon as I have a definite date, I'll, good order, or will notify the folks up there on Smithfield, that paving will be done.
So I assume the plant is either open or getting ready to open?
The plant is open, and again, with patching, we have to, we have to make sure they're running the material we need. So again, Brad will be working on that next week with scheduling, puddle patching.
Okay.
Yep.
And I appreciate the street signs are getting fixed. Saw some crews out fixing some of the ones that were problematic last year, so.
We were very close to completing the list that we had, and I think there was, they were actually had completed, and now he's had to not finish for the whole one. I'm missing, too, I know, I know that even with the new street, there were two Apothecary Way green signs that were missing, and they had to, they had to order, they just got shorted at the sign shop, so, yeah, they're finishing that up. We'll finish it up the next pretty day.
While you're here, shall we discuss F6, the request, this was brought to Consolidated to construct the fence and gate down on Randolph and Brook Street?
You want to? Yeah, let's just go ahead and do that.
So, council, at Consolidated Public Works last week, Vaughn, head of the Physical Plan at the college, appeared on virtually. They, the college is wanting to put up a solar farm, a very small one. They've got a donor, an alumnus, who wants to do this for them, and if you're, if you go down Camden Avenue, down toward the River Trail, and you make a right on Brook Street, that's right before the Child Development Center, next to Middleton Hall, where the nursing program is, and you go down toward Randolph and Wood Street, it would be at the base of that parking lot in the flat area between Brook Street and the railroad tracks. The college owns the property and got the go-ahead from Consolidated Public Works to construct a fence and put gates up to allow them to put in a solar, I don't want to call it, it's not really a solar farm, but some solar panels to help with their electrical costs over at the college. And again, this is a gift from a donor to do this. What the Consolidated Public Works Board was charged with approving was to construct the fence and the gate at the corner of Randolph- at the corner of Randolph and Brook Street, thus kind of cutting that off, but still being able to go through via a gate, and while they have their, their farm there. We don't, no one lives on that street, and again, all the property on each side is owned by the college, so it, it doesn't, it doesn't disrupt, and it's a dead end at the railroad tracks anyway, so it doesn't disrupt traffic flow in the area, so I just wanted to bring it to council, the Consolidated Public Works approved it unanimously to, to send it here, so I wanted to bring it and put it on the agenda for us to consider tonight, since it is on City Right-of-Lay and City Street. Jerry can add to, if he, if he so chooses, the, to, to anything I've, I've put up there, if any council member has a question.
The, the only thing I would add is that there will be no structure built on City Right-of-Lay.
Right.
So all we're talking about is restricted access to an area that is owned solely by West Virginia Westland, restricted access to only allow access by their folks, their vendor, and the city of Buchanan to access utilities or whatever on those rights-of-lay. So that's the only, that's the only thing there, that really, that the permission's for, there's no structures, because, you know, I don't want it to get construed that we're, we're given permission to build structures on a city right-of-lay.
Not even putting a little shed there for tools for?
No, none of the rights-of-lays will be completely open.
Okay.
No, and I did ask if this fence was going to have barbed wire at the top, and he, and he said yes, so.
That, that needs to be vetted with, is that?
So there might be a, there might be a chance that might not pass zoning and have to be?
That's not for people, that's for deer.
Well, whether we can approve something that zoning needs to run by, or is that the process?
I think the, the concept, the approval process for council would be the approval to limit access to those portions of rights-of-lay by installing gates. As far as the construction of the fence, the solar array and all that, that has to go through zoning, and vents will have to be.
Okay.
Oh, that makes sense.
My move, we accept this.
And I agree.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
I couldn't get it in.
You weren't quick enough on the.
I know.
Trick.
I should've just.
Thank you, nice to hear.
But I'll try. Okay. We have a motion, a second, is there further discussion? Dr. Reed raised his hand.
Just a question of size, quantity, or however you measure?
That, that, Dr. Reed, I don't have the specifics.
It went through the board first.
Again, that'll be something that'll come back into zoning whenever you do that approval of that, so I'll have more information as it progresses, but I think right now they're just trying to do their homework on getting these accesses restricted.
And the second question?
Hold the question. Well, we still got a question for Dr. Reed, so hold that. Councilman Rigger?
Will they maintain the property inside the fence so that it's decent?
Yes, yes, some will, again, you know, the expectation is it's gonna be mostly on a grassy area, so they will have to maintain that, just like any resident would their, their lawn, but that would be up to code.
And these are gonna have to be elevated because of the flood zone in that area, so you'll be able to mow underneath of them easily. Mr. Rigger?
Yeah, I, I think I've, is responsible for the cost of the barrier?
That would be, that would be their project, Councilman Rigger.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And just a note to Councilman Rigger, I have not forgot our trip around to visit projects, the weather got bad.
Yes, I have not forgot our date, sir, we will be making that up hopefully next week if you're up to it, and I'm glad you're home, Johnny.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rylands, and a second by Mrs. Albal. We've heard some discussion, we'll call for the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Likes, unopposed, motions carried. Thank you. If you want to head to French Creek in this weather.
Oh, yeah.
Or you can even go home if you want to.
The blizzard's out there.
Is it snowing again?
Yep, it is, orange.
Yeah, I can bet it.
Have a happy Easter. Okay, finance director, Mrs. Amberle Jenkins.
There she is.
Hey, she's right there.
She's all the money. I thought I was gonna get in here and see her, but you kept talking to Jerry.
He keeps setting the 10-minute clock over there, CJ's got the 10-minute clock.
Well, my report'll be pretty short, I have something down in strategic that I, this, my finance report's pretty short. Balance is March 31st, and I want to note that this is April 1st, so we do have some credit card lag in payments that we actually receive in, it takes sometimes two days to get, so these balances will, will change to the actual, but not a lot. General fund money market and checking, 1,058,601, and then the CD at 85,00911. Historic landmark savings remain same, $3,025. Fire truck savings, 38,348. Stockard Youth Center capital campaign, $440,053, that includes a $12,000 pledge. Coal tax, 58,918. Municipal stabilization, 814,672. Flood control account, 9,390. Consolidated Public, Public Works Board, 200,179, and the sales tax, 1,325,513.
Which we should get a check here in a couple weeks.
Yes.
About three weeks.
Yes, that'll be the, the first quarter of '21. Your revenues for the month of March were 339,511, and expenses were 337,994, almost broke even there. The bills in your packet to be approved, the ones I wanted to point out to you, $3,065 was to Target Solutions Learning for Membership and Maintenance of the Fire Department, $4,143 Scott Electric Supplies for Jawbone Electric Service, $5,561 Bruffy Trucking for Stone for the UCDA Access Road, $2,074 Lowe's for Plywood for the Theater, $15,375 to Russell, Russell Lock, Rulin Construction, work at the Theater, $4,936 Take Communications for the Security and Remote Equipment for Stockard Youth Center. And just a couple public announcements everyone probably knows about, just a reminder, the shred event, April the 17th at 9:00 AM, he just told you about that, and then the Kalia Accreditation Public Meeting for the public to attend, it's April the 5th at 7:00 PM at the training room at the Police Department and Fire Department complex. And anybody, have any questions?
No, but while you're there, let's go ahead and talk about the setup of the separate fund bank account for the money. And before we get into this discussion, before we turn it over to Ambi, I want to, we, there are, there are cities around us that have gone ahead and opened it up to a lot of public input about how to spend the money that a lot of municipalities and county governments receive. We, it's not that we are not going to do that, we are certainly interested in the public's, you know, opinions and, and what the public would like to see in our community, but what we're trying to do is we want to wait and carefully consider the guidelines that are gonna follow with this, because there will be guidelines, this is not free money that we can use for anything and everything. They're still working on that, and, and those guidelines will be forthcoming. I know several of us have conversations with different, with different folks in different agencies, that those guidelines are forthcoming, so when we receive guidelines, then we can look at public comment for how those monies will be used within those guidelines. Instead of getting everybody's hopes up and having these broad wish lists, we don't, we don't want to, we don't want to disappoint people that if we can't, if we can't work on those things because they don't fit within the parameters of, of this money. So I didn't, I hope I didn't steal Ambi's thunder away, but we, we are not, we will be transparent with this process, and, and, and I, and we will be seeking public input, we just want to wait till our Ts and our Cross and our Is are dotted with the guidelines before we go out and, and do that. So I wanted to make sure that we, we brought that up in the meeting this evening.
That's correct, because we, we don't know the details of how broad we can be with that, those funds, I mean, it does say water and sewer projects, and a few other things, but some of the cities want to go much broader, and as of today even, I got an email from municipal, everybody's waiting to get those confirmed detailed guidelines, and we don't have those yet.
Right.
So yes, at some point, I, I agree, we need to do something to start that process. But, so in the meantime, the auditor's office is a step ahead of this, we have not received any money yet, and, and, you know, we have to wait for the federal government to release it to the state government, and that's approximately 60 days, probably about 45 at this point. And then from that point on, the state has, has 30 days to release it to those cities, and they will start placing those funds in the cities. So we have, the auditor's office wanted to be proactive, you know, the cares money was coming so fast, there was not a lot of rules in place. They have, they have stepped back and said, "We are going to make sure we're following this money properly, and that it's gonna be easy to see how it's spent." So they want us to set up each of the cities that are receiving this, set up a separate special revenue fund for this, these funds, and they want a separate checking account for these funds. They're also going to, they don't want that intermingled with any of the other funds. They're also going to utilize an online reporting system, though we have to put the details of the money we receive in and the money we expense out for these funds, so that when it's audited, they can quickly identify what they're going towards, and the state will be looking at it too, and if they see something that they may question us about, or cities about how it's being expensed. We have to go through training for that, they're gonna set up some virtual training for that, they don't have that finished yet. But I'll need to get permission from the council when the time comes to set, go ahead and set up this checking account and the fund within our general ledger to track these revenues and expenses. And I really, I don't even know if we can have interest-bearing accounts right now even, sometimes these, they're, they're odd about that, you know, they don't want us to get, some of these funds, even in grants, don't want you to gain interest off of them, so I don't know if it can be an interest-bearing account at this point, so I'm really not, don't want to be, I want to be prepared for it and go ahead and set it up in the books and maybe communicate with some of the banks, but it's gonna be a, an account that's set up separately. I need permission from the council to.
My move, we authorize you to set up these accounts.
Yes.
Randy got it this time. Gotta get something this week.
All right, I won't motion anymore.
You've been stylish to the corner.
Ambi, I think, Mayor, I, I think Ambi's on the right track, and, and I think this is a good motion, I really do.
Well, it, it, we, we don't, you know, any, any organization, but especially a municipal organization, needs to be very careful with finances, and which we are, and Ambi does a wonderful job keeping us safe financially, so not, not co-mingling any of this and keeping it totally separate is the way to go. So we have a motion by Mr. Rylands, a second by Mr. Sanders. Is there any further discussion? And Ambi, you'll report back to us as things happen with, if we can put an interest account in this.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Likes, unopposed. The motion has carried unanimously. Ambi, while we're here, do you want to go ahead, there's a request on here, sorry JB, for, from the Mountaineer Food Bank, what, what's, do you want to speak to that?
Oh, I don't, I don't really, Mountaineer Food Bank funding for $5,000 for freshen, I do not know what that is.
Randy?
No, I'm looking for the packet here, it's F4.
All I know is that we, we received it. Let's see.
I would think this would be something that we discuss once we get.
I'm inclined to.
The care lack money and.
Well, I think that it would be appropriate to have someone from the Mountaineer Food Bank come to us and, and explain what the request is, that, so I'm, I, I would like to entertain a motion that we table this until we receive a, somebody. Randy got it, CJ.
After this, I'll be quiet.
Are you seconding?
Yes, sir, I did.
Mary's gonna second, because CJ's, they're not allowed to. Okay, um, let the media have fun with that, we're censoring council members. Is there any further discussion on tabling the request from Mountaineer Food Bank until we receive some additional information from Mountaineer Food Bank? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Pam, did you chime in?
Yes, I did.
Okay, likes, unopposed. That motion has carried. Okay, Chief, JB Kim.
Good evening.
Well, let's see if we can do.
That last one, if Ambi doesn't know about it, you probably. Good evening, everybody. In your packet, you'll see our February responses, 87 responses from the Fire Department, and year-to-date, 179. Those are still trending as normal, about 63% in the city limits, 37%. Out in the first due are out in the counting on mutual aid calls. Captain Brown Elmore and Lieutenant Lynn Baxa completed the Quality Improvement through accreditation class last week. That is a, every, Monday, Wednesday, Friday for three weeks, two hours a day. Everybody that's being, getting involved in specific aspects of our accreditation is taking this course, it really defines it, and I, I wouldn't, if anybody questioned, I mean, somebody like Ambi or anybody on council or on the fire committee, I would really recommend you taking it. It's only a couple hours a day, three days a week, for three weeks. I have the money in our training budget to pay for, and I really feel, after taking that class, some people outside the Fire Department would have a whole different outlook on what our accreditation process is. Insurance Service Organization, ISO, will be here April 22nd at 6:00 PM at the Public Safety Complex. They're coming to do a four-hour informative class, it's designed for fire chiefs and government administration.
When, when was that again?
April 22nd at 6:00 PM. I will be inviting the county commission and the fire chiefs of the fire departments in the rest of the county, so that is a very informative class also.
Is that a one?
It's a one, one evening, yeah. And I wonder where, Rob, the mayor may have seen it, where South Charleston and Charleston just got re-graded in their Class Ones, so, which we're probably almost to the point where we, we should have a reevaluation, so. Last week, I sat with Dr. Reed for a little while, the leadership class that Greg McKann has been on, spoke for 30, 40 minutes, I think there was eight or nine people. That was a different setup, I never had a camera and a computer where I could see myself at the same time, I didn't wish one to look at, but very interesting, they had some questions, very good time, it's always good to educate people in the fire service.
He must have upgraded since our presentation, because all we had was the camera.
Oh, you didn't have the computer?
Oh, no, we were first, so we were the guinea pigs.
Yeah, I had a computer, but I had my glasses, so I couldn't see.
But it was, it was a good time, and Dr. Reed and I had some discussions afterwards, about 20 minutes of emergency response in our community and discuss things, so it's always good to get out and talk. Captain Baxa and myself met with the city attorney, Tom O'Neil, and Ambi last week, and wondered some things that we need to start looking at through our accreditation process. We're still in the process of data retrieval, we're in like our third year of it, you have to have three years of solid data, like I've said in the past, when we start this process, you know, the fire departments in West Virginia, you have a free software and you have one you pay for. Well, the free software. have a free software and you have one you pay for. Well, the free software didn't collect all the information that you needed for the accreditation process. And when Captain Baxa went to the first quality improvement through accreditation class, he learned about emergency reporting, which is what they recommended. And that's the system we are using now. It's not free, but I've also spoke with the county commission, President Tenny, about maybe providing that to the rest of the fire departments in the county so we're comparing apples to apples and not apples to oranges when everybody pulls their data or can pull their data. So we can look at response times to all parts of our county and what we're providing. And maybe that'll come out in our review of everybody's emergency services. With that meeting with Tom and Amy, I went back through and pulled the Civil Service Handbook that we give all our firefighters that are career firefighters and started going through it. There's a lot of it needs updated. So as we go through the process, we will be having periodic meetings with our Civil Service Commission to update that book. So, and the only other thing I got in your packet, I provided the explanation of the SAFER grant, additional funds from the last meeting. That 200 million was put out there for cities to hire back laid-off firefighters or to continue paying firefighters that were going to get laid off. So at some point in time here in the near future, I'd really like to sit down with council and review the hiring of the three additional firefighters.
So you're saying that there's, from what you understand, there's no chance of our grant being approved? Have we got any other feedback other than what you read in that?
That was provided by the IFM, International Association of Firefighters, and Mr. White Hair from Region Seven is basically the same concept. That there's no application for this. This was already in the system. It's just additional money for cities that have fell on hard times.
Which makes sense with the COVID pandemic. I mean, that's.
Yeah. So here, you know, fortunately, you know, our city has not fell on hard times to lay people off or going to lay people off. So that's what that 200 additional million dollars is for. So.
Is Amy still here?
I don't see. Amy, in your office? Is she in her office, Kenee?
Yeah, yeah. Because I, we, I remember what Shane said the other day.
Yeah.
I'll follow up on that too.
Can you yell at her and tell her?
Did we?
Shane White Hair.
Did we ask him anything about the SAFER grant?
Yes, we did. And he said that he, recall, he said he had hired a new grant writer and that those were the two grants that they were, two grants that we.
He's going to try to dig deeper.
And that he felt that they would be used, that the funds could be used for new hires.
He felt there's a chance.
In his research when he talked to you and I.
He has different research than I have.
Yeah. That's the only thing. And I, now this came from the International.
Association of Firefighters, which we're members of.
Right, right. So that's the only reason I think we're going to, we want to, but he's hiring a new grant writer and we submitted those two things, those two requests, which he said were going to be, well, I'm sorry, the one, this request plus.
And our humanity.
National Davenport for the Wombi event. So I think if we just need another week or so to find out.
Yeah, because I'm thinking, I'm thinking they were starting like that was the two grants that I felt like they were going to start on.
There's no application process for it right now whatsoever. There's no way to even open one up.
No, I understand. But I mean, that's what.
I think it's all part of this money that's coming in though, and that's what.
There'll be guidance. It will, it will come. We're patient. Let me ask a question about, so how do you think that hiring of three additional paid firemen is going to impact your volunteers? And I asked that because I think at one time, the emergency squad was volunteer-driven and now it's, I don't believe it's that way. And I guess you've got to put yourself in the seat. If I'm a volunteer and I'm responding in the same kind of fashion as a paid person, at some point, I'm going to say, why am I doing this? And this guy's getting, you know, $20 an hour or whatever that might be. So do you think, what, how do you feel the new hires is going to affect your current volunteer base?
I mean, I can't, they're not here. But speaking as their chief, if you want them to come, they'll come and tell you what they think and they need them. We're responding to three, five, three to five calls a day. You're a business owner. Are you going to let an employee leave three to five times a day to go on emergency calls? It's the need of our community. And as the outlying departments diminish, we're responding more and more out of the first due.
Right. Well, I guess what my question is, you say you have 15, currently 15 volunteers. If you hire three additional firemen, 12 months from now, are you going to have, you project you're going to have 15 or do you think you'll have 12 or 18? Or do you have any?
We're trying to recruit, we're trying different ways to recruit volunteers. And in the January meeting of the volunteer organization, we decided to try to start something a little different. Because like right now, if somebody applies for the Buchanan Volunteer Fire Department and they get in, there may be a three-month lag to get their class started to be able to run calls. So what we're doing now, we're looking, going back and doing a five-year study on when the most people apply to the volunteer organization, compiling that information and say, just throw it out there, March is the biggest year for people to apply for the volunteer fire department. We're going to start having a fire academy starting in April. We're going to take applications twice a year to do that. We're just trying everything we can to improve the ways for people to apply to be volunteers.
I think what your plan is.
It will affect the 15. Does 15 people, and it may fluctuate one or two because everybody's life changes. And when you look at who we've had and who we have now, the people that we lose traditionally over activity are people that are, that join the fire department when they're 20, 21 years old. And at 28, 29, 30 years old, they get married and they start having kids. And then when they're 45 to 50, they're more active. That 30 to 40, 42-year range, you lose them because it's life. And here we are, you know, two-thirds of my workforce are volunteers. There's no other department in the city that has to rely on volunteers for day-to-day operations. No other department, other than the fire department. I'm very thankful for the 15 that we have. They're highly trained. We have high standards. I had somebody tell me one day, your standards are too high. Thank you. That's because we're using best practices. It will not, to tell you that 15 volunteers are going to get mad and leave because we hired three more people, that's not going to happen, Mr. Rylands.
Okay.
Well, that's because they love.
They're probably more likely to, because of the workload that would.
It makes it easier on them to check when they come, you know, they don't have to leave or they don't, they don't have to leave. You're talking about. You know, I was a volunteer before I was a career fireman. And you leave family gatherings, you leave birthday parties, you leave your wife at dinners, you, you know, and that's what we do. We tear our clothes up, we drive their, they drive their own vehicles. These are people that are dedicated to providing a service to our community. And by hiring three more people, you're doing them a favor.
How do you think that you're doing scheduling, that the additional three firemen will impact your percentage of overtime as a, as a complete unit? So right now, or last year was 37% of your gross payroll was overtime. Do you see that, being able to take that to 20% of the gross payroll or?
I don't know how you expect that to happen. You have 168 hours that you have to cover, 24/7 coverage. If you want 24/7 coverage, it's not unique to Buchanan. Overtime is there.
Right, but you're hiring three more people into the mix. You would think you can reduce the existing overtime on, that you have today.
So still, when somebody's sick or takes vacation, unless the city council sees that we need to stay at a minimum of two, you know, you're still paying somebody.
In other words, it's not going to impact the percentage of overtime.
I mean, we can discuss that. I mean, there's ways of looking at it and you just have to sit down and look at it. You know, if you're, if you feel comfortable, if you have three people per shift right now, okay, and your shift officer takes vacation, okay, he's your leader of your shift, okay, and you don't hire back a shift officer to cover that, statistics show that line of duty tests happen more when there's no command. So you're letting a three-year fireman and a one-year fireman be on your fire truck or firefighter. So right now, the way we set with two a shift, if the shift captain takes off, another shift officer covers that. That's where the overtime comes from. Unlike any other department in the city, and I'm not going, you know, the police department, if somebody takes vacation, they don't hire a police officer back to cover. They go with one police officer.
They're 9.6% of overtime to gross payroll.
Sure. And I'm just saying, if council sees that we hired a third person per shift and you all want to continue to be staying at a minimum of two, that's up to you. And that's discussions we'd have to have. If you did that, it would save you all your sick leave and all your vacation coverage, but you're going to be at a two.
Maybe there's somewhere in the middle that we could.
It could be a toolbox. It's something in your toolbox, Mr. Rylands. It could be.
So what's your percent, I brought this up before, the FLSA overtime standards, if we, when we offered, when and if these jobs are offered, that they're offered with an understanding that as a new hire, you would be under the overtime rules of not receiving overtime until 53 hours, do you want the job? Is that, what's your thoughts?
It's doable, but I would also look at the starting wage of a firefighter. Right now, a trained firefighter hired at Buchanan is $12 an hour, okay? At the end of the year, right now, with overtime, it's about $38,000 a year. If you go.
The Buchanan Fire Department average wage is $58,000.
Okay.
So.
And the average.
The new hires, it would be difficult to hire the new people at a higher rate than the pre-existing, but the pre-existing have the access to overtime at 40 hours compared to 53. So it's just something to think about as we're evaluating, you know, this whole.
CJ, there's an FLSA class coming up, put on by a lawyer. And if you want to take it with me, I'd be more happy to.
Well, I already asked our attorney about this. So I don't need to go to class when I have.
I'm just, I'm going to take the class, so I'm familiar with the FLSA.
Right.
So I, you know, when I get asked.
I'm not talking about forcing it upon the existing employees. Just similar to what we've done with other employees with contributions to healthcare. If they're a new employee, there's different standards. And so just part of the conversation you brought, you brought it up, so I'm.
But I also want you to look, if you review, the city of Clarksburg right now is hiring and the base rate for them is $43,000 a year. If you go to FLSA in the city of Buchanan and a firefighter starts at $35,000, you have five people on the list right now and they look at that and they go, I'd rather go to Clarksburg than one. You know, it becomes that.
There's a lot for them everywhere. I mean, it's a choice.
So, but if you can't get people on a list, that's the difference in civil service. You know, people, there's standards they have to meet to take it down.
This is an essential service and I, I think we should all want the best that we can possibly provide for our community. This is, it's an investment. So I don't, I don't want us to go down the road trying to, you know, try to, try to get by with the least amount possible to pay somebody. I mean, I, if we, I don't, because you get what you pay for. The quality of work, I mean, if the, if the best are going to other communities and we're getting the third, fourth, or fifth best, what does that translate into as far as the service turnaround and provided by, you know, the department to the community? So we have to, there's a lot to balance. There's a lot to look at.
And we're free to discuss this anytime. I mean.
Well, I think we're committed to getting some feedback from Region Seven and then this, we'll continue this conversation.
Robbie, can I say something? I don't, I hope I can still debate and ask about that. I don't under, I think you folks are missing the big picture about hiring additional firemen. You can talk about overtime. We're talking about hiring additional firemen. So when that red fire truck goes through the red door to Pocahontas Street because 97-year-old Miss Smith is trapped in her house, three firemen are coming. That's what we're talking about. We're talking about providing a service to Mrs. Smith. Mrs. Smith is a hell of a lot safer, her chances of survival are a whole lot greater when that fire truck leaves immediately with three firefighters on it than it does with two. Two firemen, it's not a safe situation for the fire department. It's not a safe situation for Mrs. Smith. I'm going to be quite honest. I've sat back and watched for the last few months and I think you guys need to put your personalities aside and make a decision. CJ, no offense, but I feel you've picked Chief Kimball like a cheap government mule. You have, you have.
Judgments are.
That's, that's fine. I'm just, I would like to see, I would like to see you all put your difficulties and put those, put those aside. And please, please, work for Mrs. Smith on Pocahontas Street. That's what, that's what, that's what we're trying to do. Work for Mrs. Smith on Pocahontas Street. Just think about that. Think about Miss Smith on Pocahontas Street. I think you have your answer.
Thanks, CJ.
Dr. Reed, you raised your hand earlier. Did you want to comment?
Just a very brief comment. This issue of volunteers versus paid and training, I think pervades many of our organizations that have volunteers and paid people. I wonder if there's an opportunity in our community somehow to have people look at that issue as an issue in itself in a productive way. I don't have the answer. Something to think about.
Dr. Reed, I discussed this after our last question, about the value of training and what, how training has affected volunteerism. You know, I've been part of the fire service for almost 31 years. And when I got in the fire department, they handed you boots, a helmet, a coat, said, there it is. I had no idea what I was doing. In today's world, when we take a member in, he's, the person that comes in gets a mentor and there's a mentor packet of almost 100 hours of training that person goes through. Not everybody can do it. We find people that join the fire department, as soon as you put them in a face piece, they go into just an open room to breathe air, a face piece, they go crazy.
So one more thing. So the former chief and yourself have both referred to firemen responding to fires. And that's what, that was his example and with yours. You want people coming to save you in a fire. But of the breakdown in incidents, we had six fires in 179 incidents.
Okay. We had seven in 13 days in the last two weeks.
So we're talking, you know, averages. The point is, you know, if you're going to talk about the responding to emergent, delivery of emergency services, then that ought to be part of the conversation. Not painting a picture of some 92-year-old lady burning in a fire because we're too cheap to pay a fireman.
Did I paint that picture? Then you need to talk to him. I was a part of this, sir. I'm here, I'm here trying to create dialogue with you and my door is always open. You can come to my office anytime, sir. You was at the police department the other day, you could have walked over and asked me questions. I'm not here to argue with you. I'm, I'm here to discuss these issues.
You're advocating for a point and I'm trying to discuss all the issues that are bothering around that point.
So what I'm going to say is, everything that we respond to, this city council voted for us to respond to and the services provided document in our accreditation process. Every thing we respond to, you all approve. If there's something in that document you want us to remove, we'll discuss it. It's best practices. That's what you're asking us to do? This is what I'm asking you all to do. Best practices.
Have we done, have you all finished your accreditation?
We're still in the third year of data retrieval.
Okay, that's what I thought. That's what I thought.
See, unlike the police department, they have a long stretch of data collection.
Right, right. Maybe it would behoove us to get together and talk about this.
I met the phone with Amy last week, so.
They're working on that.
Well, we can't get like three people together, okay?
That's why.
Because the rules, the mayor calls it a working session.
Well, even that still has to be a public.
Has to be public. And there's nothing to hide, you know, it's a learning experience for all of us, okay?
The data that we provided for the three additional firefighters, because I don't want anybody to think we're trying to pull stuff out of the air. This, the data we gave city council on the budget was just structured fires. It wasn't wrecks with injuries, it wasn't wrecks with in traffic. It wasn't wrecks with injuries, it wasn't wrecks with entrapment, it wasn't medical calls, it wasn't elevator rescues, it wasn't cat rescues, it was just fires.
Mr. Mayor, if I might offer, I mean, we're, we're way off the rails here. This started at the report of the activities for this past month. There's been some passionate discussion here. I can speak only for myself, but I'm committed to finding a way to hire three new firemen. That's what we've talked about, that's what we've committed to. I want us to look at Region 7, I appreciate what you brought us from the IFE. We've talked to them, as you know, government has a tendency to issue funding and reinvent a many, many ways of how you can do that funding, that's why we're looking at that. I appreciate Councilman Rollins' approach to taking a look at the, the financial aspect of everything, I appreciate your, your consideration of sitting down and looking at scheduling and looking at the overtime situation, constantly reviewing that, and I think that's something that, that we should always do and protect the fiduciary responsibilities of it, always take a look at those things. But, tonight's council meeting has an agenda, I think we should stick to that agenda, I think we had a very passionate discussion in budget meetings. You know, I hope that the rest of the council is also committed to continuing on the journey of hiring three firemen as soon as we flush out the funding apparatus appropriately with Region 7, and determine what is the best avenue to do that. And if there's, you know, if it's okay with Councilman Rollins and the others, I think we kind of get back on the rail and finish, you know, finish our agenda and, and move forward, is that okay, Mr. Mayor?
That's perfectly fine, Mr. Sanders, I, I agree with you.
I agree with you.
Is there any further discussion or questions for Chief Kimball relative to the report presented? Okay, thanks, JB.
Thank you, Chief.
Have a happy Easter.
Happy Easter, good, have a good.
Thank you, JB.
Uh, Mr. O'Neill communicated to me earlier that he did not have a report, he's deferring until the strategic issues for discussion and/or vote. Under Correspondence and Information, we've got a Kali accreditation assessment, public notice and media release that invites the public to, to comment. We have a letter of understanding between the Buchanan Fire Department, Buchanan Police Department, and West Virginia Wesleyan College for Fire and Police Utilization of Structures at 79 and 82 Randolph Street for drills and training exercises. We've got a letter from the West Virginia State Auditor about accounting and, and record-keeping requirements for the American Rescue Plan, those, as we talked, continue to trickle in. We've got two proclamations, one for Dr. Reed, as, as we mentioned earlier, Dr. Reed Day was March 26th of 2021, and then we had a proclamation also of the 100th anniversary of our hospital, St. Joseph's Hospital, which I believe that was on Sunday, I think was the official, was date for that, Sunday, Monday timeframe, but we did it last week. We have Atlantic Coast Pipeline Restoration Plan and Scoping Notification, we've got a letter to Virgil LaRosa about leasing the space on the Deer Creek Ridge Radio Tower for our private Intranet Communications. We've got a public, or a PR release from R26201, Colonial Theater Gallery Presents Upstate Youth Art Exhibit, April the 3rd, and then we've got finally Property Purchase Agreement for 63 East Main Street, which we will also share at the Stockard Youth Board Meeting on Monday evening. Under the Consent Agenda, we have the approval of the regular meeting minutes for the 18th of March, approval of the building and wiring permits, approval of the payment of the bills, and the approval of the appointment of Samuel Walker, Samuel's the son of James and Roseanne Walker here in town as a city representative for the Upstate County Parks and Recreation Board.
Mr. Mayor, I must ask if we can table approval of minutes of the regular meeting on 3/18/2021 due to a minor glitch.
Okay.
Those do not get submitted to Teresa for distribution.
Okay.
They will be submitted and distributed to council and added to the next agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I would entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda with E2, E3, and E4, excluding E1, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on 3/18 per Mr. Sanders' request. We have a motion by Mrs. Awal, do we have a second?
Second?
The second by Mr. Sanders is their discussion. Hearing the need for none, we'll call for the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those like sign opposed, motion has carried. We only have two items remaining on the strategic issues for discussion and/or vote. I want to add that Mr. O'Neill has asked for a brief executive session following tonight's council meeting referencing a property matter. No decisions will be made for the benefit of the media, I just wanted to throw that out there for council to, to consider. Under F1, and we'll defer to Mr. O'Neill for this, we have an, we have the approval of a mutual aid agreement between the Buchanan Police Department and the Upstate County Sheriff's Office, Mr. O'Neill.
Hello, coming?
Tom?
I'm waiting for him to appear one place or the other.
There he is.
Sorry, I was, I'm sorry, I was chatting with Ambie for a second, what's the question?
Okay, so we are down to strategic issues for discussion and/or vote, we've got the approval of the mutual aid agreement between the Buchanan Police Department and Upstate County Sheriff's Department.
Well, I reviewed that, and I don't have any problem with it, except there's a, a tall typo in paragraph five that I may narrow where about, but I, I don't have any issues other than that, we can, we can fix that with a little notation, so we can.
So I, I wrote back to you today and said I didn't have a problem with it, have you heard from Chief Gregory about that?
I haven't, I don't know.
Okay.
So we don't know what the chief's position is, I mean, obviously, he's.
No, I mean, this type has got to be, I mean, the typo has to be fixed, because it's basically, you know, happened is that the word "not" was omitted from a particular line, and that, and it really has to be.
Oh, yeah, that was.
But I think the chief is not going to have a problem with it, it's just a matter of who wants, it's already decided by the commission, I just think, and write in the text and send it back, go, it'll be fine.
That, that was my recommend, or that was, Tom had sent an email to, to Mr. Gregory and myself today, it showed us in the area where it should be. Since they've signed it, and that's the only thing that needs to be added, I, I don't have a problem with it, and we can just initial next to the word "not" to make sure that we know it's there, I don't have a problem with that.
So what are the basic, for, for the purposes of those watching the meeting, can one of the, either you, Mr. Mayor, or Tom, could you give a quick overview of what the mutual aid agreement establishes?
Well, the meeting is permitted by state law between law enforcement and these certain contiguous with each other, that the mutual aid agreement just permits the city police departments or the county sheriff's department to assist the other in an emergency situation, it lays out the parameters of that assistance, and, and how the, the provisions of the agreement are, are called into effect. It's, it's permissive, it does not require the police department to respond to a particular call, especially if there's a situation where assisting the sheriff's department who's all in, has some kind of problem for public safety in the city. It's, it's pretty standard, straightforward agreement, and have any big questions that there are.
I think that's good, good explanation for everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
CJ, you want to make a motion to approve this?
I'll let someone on the phone do it here.
Oh, there you go, somebody on the phone.
So the motion would be to approve the mutual grade, aid agreement as presented by, and with, just noting that we would add the word "not" at the appropriate place, and then we would initial there, and then, and then that would be official. We have a motion to that effect.
I'll make.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bucklue, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Mrs. Awal.
Well, will that you, Jack?
Tried to get in there.
Jack, or, or, did you want to make a comment, or did you, were you trying to second?
No, I just wanted to second.
Let's give it, let's give it to.
Yeah, we're going to.
Give it to Mr. Rigor, and Mrs. Awal's been active enough.
I am.
She's seconded that.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Like sign opposed, motion carries. Under F2, I thought that we were going to be ready to do this this evening, I thought we had the slate together, but we've got some further discussions that need to be had with respect to who's going to serve on the board of the, of the newly appointed board of the Colonial Theater. So, I'm going to ask once again that we table this until the 15th meeting, we do need to appoint it at the 15th meeting because the first opportunity for that new board to be able to meet would be the week of the 19th, so I'm going to ask that we table this until the 15th meeting to officially set the officers.
Need a motion?
I, I, if, yeah, if you.
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Rollins, do we have a second?
Already did.
And we have a second by Mr. Sanders, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing the need for none, we'll call for the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Like sign opposed, motion carries. That takes us down to comments and announcements, please keep in mind, Mr. O'Neill's asked for a brief executive session. Mrs. Awal, what do you have for us?
Um, nothing.
Okay. Mrs. Bucklue?
Napping.
Mr. Rollins?
I brought up in Consolidated Public Works that would be a good idea to write a letter to the United States Post Office in Buchanan about their handicap accessibility and their blocking free access of pedestrians down Spring Street, there's no sidewalk continuity in front of the post office, and I think a remodel, at least a request for them to take a look at that and see what it might yield in a few years, but don't ask, don't get.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Thomas is not with us this evening, Mr. Rigor?
I want to thank Mrs. Lai and the others, and the 88 for their efforts on putting together the barbecue batch for the dribs, the many activities we can have in our community, that the better it is, we'd feel like to see more activities in the fall and winter to bring people in for the sleight of time, so that would always become, hopefully, added to the economy, and it's good to be participating and being able to speak, so that's all I have.
Well, your voice is sounding stronger and stronger all the time, so that's, that's a good, good sign. And, and finally, Mr. Sanders?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so I'm, I'm happy to announce, I've been in the media somewhat and on my Facebook page, but as I've been very adamant about bringing activity to the city of Buchanan, in my, my other life, I produced pageants for the Miss Universe Organization under the Miss USA brand, so I announced recently that July 9, 10, and 11, I will be producing the Miss West Virginia USA and the Miss West Virginia Teen USA pageant for the very first time here in Buchanan. In the past, I've held it in Morgantown on the campus of West Virginia University, and prior to that, in Flatwoods at the Dave Edin Conference Center. So I've worked out the details with West Virginia Wesleyan College after producing a COVID-19 mitigation plan to them, and of course, I will produce it under the guidance as we get closer of the Upstate County Health Department and the COVID restrictions provided by Charleston and the governor's office, whatever they may be at that time, and West Virginia Wesleyan College, whatever their wishes might be as far as audience participation and so forth. But this is exciting because it is the most prestigious pageant system in the country. Miss West Virginia USA will lead the Miss USA on the Miss Universe, it's what I've done for a living for the past 40 years, so I'm excited to bring it to my hometown of Buchanan, so July 9, 10, 11. That will be hopefully one of the big activities for the summer, so that's my announcement for the evening, thank you, sir.
Thank you, we're excited. Okay, I do not have any specific comments, besides I want to wish everybody a very happy Easter this weekend, and we appreciate all that our employees do for us across the city, police, fire, and waste, and streets, sewage, and water. Our, our organization would not operate without all the dedication that we have from our city employees, it's not those of us that sit here, so we thank them and appreciate the work of the council, and I hope everybody has a safe holiday weekend. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn us into an executive session as of 8:35. All right.